Yes.
All right, Paul.
Here.
Sarah, Gary.
Here.
Here.
Lynn Polly.
Here.
Norm Foley.
Here.
Michelle Bigger.
Here.
And Matt.
Present. Okay, public meeting participation rules, please. One, please wait for the chair to acknowledge you before you speak. Two, begin by stating your name and address. Three, give comments, opinions, or questions on the issue being discussed. Or to ensure that everyone has time to speak, we can address and we can address other items on the agenda. We may limit the individual speaking time to five minutes. If time permits, we may allow one additional time period to provide new information. Five, please be respectful of planning commission applicant neighbors. Again, thank you for attending. Tom Hilber, Chair. Okay, agenda. We have.
I'll make a motion there, so.
Larry, you support Matt's supports all in favor.
I.
Post. Okay. Approval of minutes of March fourteenth, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-two.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes.
All support.
Larry.
Larry.
All in favor.
I.
Post. Okay, public comment. If you have something, it's, I guess, even if it's regarding a case, you could, you can say it, but we'd rather you presented it during the case. So if in general, as I may have any comments, and I don't know if there's anybody online.
That's what we're trying to figure.
I assume because we don't have very many here, we have just the representatives of the owner or the owners of the parcels. So we'll probably wait until we get into the cases before we. Well, wait a second while our IT guy.
There we go.
Ninety-five hour.
Okay, that was like a minute, so I'll. That was like thirty seconds, so I'll give you a dollar later, okay? Okay, do we have anybody online? I don't believe so.
I need that mic for Norm. One right there, yeah.
This one says.
Okay.
Just make sure you turn it off.
It's just good luck.
There you go.
Okay, correspondence, report oh, three, zero, two, two from Rick Duel. Report oh, four, two, zero, two, two from Rick Duel and see a letter regarding case zero, three, dash, two, two.
Then we also have another letter to add to that.
W Bird. Okay, and then we have a just a handwritten letter from Gladys Spiegelmeier. Regarding the case zero, three, two, two, McClellan Road. Okay, so do we need to enter our, the correspondence and, okay. So we need a motion to recognize correspondence.
I make a motion, we file and she have a correspondence.
Support.
Shell supports all in favor. Post. Okay. All right, we're gonna go to the hearings. This case number one, case P dash zero, three, dash, two, two. Hugh A. Brown, the third request is special approval use for an accessory dwelling unit slash guest house property is located at eighty, seventy-eight hundred McClellan Road. Parcel number zero, one, three, dash, zero, two, three, dash, zero, 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 dash, zero, four, three, dash, zero, zero, in a mixed residential R three zone district. Okay, do we have a representative from the Mister, is Mister Brown here?
He's en route.
Oh, in route, all right. Well, do you want to go to the second case and then?
Uh, it doesn't matter. I, I think both can be pretty easily, if, if the second case wants to set precedence, that would afford Mister Brown.
Okay, yeah, why don't we? Okay, well, we'll go to case number two. Case P zero, or dash, two, two, Andrew. Smolinski, Bit Builder requests a special approval use for an accessory dwelling unit slash guest house property is located at eighty-seven, twenty-six, Scutious Road Parcel Number zero, one, three, zero, one, four, zero, 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 dash, one, four, zero, dash, zero, one, in a waterfront residential zone district. And you are Andrew, okay? I guess, uh, do you have anything? Yes. Okay, motion open public hearing. Okay. Motion to open public hearing, all in favor.
I.
Pose. Okay. Go ahead. Yeah, yeah. Do, uh, for number seventy. Questions for Andrews. Okay.
What do you can do with that little yellow cabbage? They're in there. When I pull in, I see it. I'm sure it's got some years on it. So the spot you were clearing there where the trees were cut down, is that where you're? Yes, that grass there now, it's gonna be, uh, the new ownership over that. I said it. Yeah.
Yes, yes, this. Okay, um. Do we have to close public hearing? Okay, and nobody, anybody else says, we're good? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, need a motion to do that.
I'll make a motion.
Larry. Support. Matt will support. All in favor.
Hi.
All right, closed. Okay, now we will, uh, we can review the special approval use for the, uh, we have to make this part of our, uh,
You're gonna read Rick Duel's report.
Rick Duel's report will make part of our, we need a motion to make that part of our, part of the case.
I'll make a motion.
I'll support.
Shell sports, all in favor.
I.
Pose, okay. Okay, um, I won't read the parcel numbers over again. Special approval use for construction of a garage slash guest house and waterfront residential zone. The structure will be a garage with living quarters in the upper level. The existing garage will be removed or replaced with the proposed structure. It gives the address of eighty-seven, twenty-six, Scutious Road. Okay, the district standards, the parcel is located in the waterfront residential district. Accessory, use accessory dwelling units slash guest hosts are allowed in zoning district as a special use. Approval use lot, lot area and lot width complies. Building height, two stories. Lot coverage complies and setbacks comply. Minimum floor area minimum required is nine sixty. The proposed structure is twenty-six by forty-four. The livable floor space of eleven hundred and forty-four square feet proposed. New primary residence will be four to five thousand square feet of floor area. Okay, special use approval standards, adjacent uses. The use of use location and size of nature and intensity of the operation shall not be such as to disrupt the orderly and proper development of the district as a whole, or be in conflict with the with or discouraged principle permitted uses of the adjacent or neighboring lands and buildings. Accessory dwelling is considered consistent with residential development in the area, no potential issues. Special use to shall not be more objectionable to nearby properties by reason of traffic noise vibration, dust, smoke, glare, flashing lights, disposal waste than the operation of any principal permitted use. The accessory bill unit will not create objectionable conditions, so that standard is met. Number three, the you shall not increase hazardous, hazardous fire and other just to either the property or adjacent properties. The proposed use will not increase hazard. That standard is met. The planning commission may consider the potential impact on property values of nearby properties when determining the impact of proposed special use on the adjacent properties. Oh, no potential issues identified, it will increase, should increase the property values. If anything, traffic and access, the you shall not increase traffic hazards or cause congestion on the public highway and streets of the area adequate access to the to the use shall be furnished by existing roads and highways or proposed roads and highways. The proposed use will not cause appreciable increase in traffic volumes or hazard access is provided off Scutious Road. No, no potential hazards exist that standard is met. Public services. The water supply and sewage disposal system shall be adequate for proposed use applicable provide onsite water supply and sewage disposal according to the health department. I guess, I noticed there is a above ground, uh, tank that, uh, field, I believe, right now, is that, is that what you plan on, or you?
I talked to Perry Lashinsky, he said the tanks are, are adequate. Um, and the field is too, but when they do the homes, they're gonna have to add that to the field.
Okay, so it's adequate.
I call the health department and make sure.
So you believe, or he told you it's adequate for what you're doing now, then, okay? That's what I was wondering, yeah. Okay, so that's under this myth, the use says, and I don't know, th- this doesn't have to come back to the planning commission when they do the, uh, yeah.
I have all setbacks.
Okay, I didn't think it would, yeah. Okay, the use will adequately serve the essential public services and facilities or that the person's responsible for the establishment of the proposed use will adequately provide any such service or facilities. Advocate will provide needed services and facilities beyond what is currently available. Standard has been met. The use will not create excessive additional public costs, will not be detrimental to the economic welfare of the township. No, no issues identified, the center is the net natural resources, the proposed garage slash guest house will not create a substantially negative impact on the natural resources of the township or the natural environment as a whole, according to this section, the landscape shall be preserved. It's natural state as far as practical by minimizing tree and soil removal and any grade or slope changes shall be keeping with general appearances of the neighborhood. The standard has been met, in general, the use will not impair the purpose and intent of this order, it's no potential issues identified. Okay, section seven thirty-seven accessory dwelling. Garage slash guest house meets the standards of section seven thirty-seven of the ordinance. One, accessory dwelling unit is a law per lot, okay? Accessory dwelling unit does not exceed fifty percent of the total floor area of the principal dwelling. Okay, it won't, it won't, uh,
No.
Of the new dwelling, yeah. Okay, the accessory dwelling unit meets the needs of principal dwelling, set, unit setbacks, standard is meant accessory dwelling unit will provide electricity, plumbing and heating. Yes, that's been met. Accessory unit will be self-contained freestanding detached unit. Yes, that's the net accessory unit shall be a separate exterior entrance. Yes, that's. The residents of the primary structure should maintain the accessory unit, it shall ensure that no excessive noise traffic light occurs on the property, that is meant the accessory unit will conform to the current building codes that has been met. It's going to be met. One additional parking space will be provided onsite for the additional dwelling. That standard has been met. Okay, summary of findings on the, and analysis of the information provided, the guest, uh, garage slash guest house, the ordinance standards. Anybody have any?
Does the, um, the only thing that I questioned was, um, accessory dwelling does not exceed fifty percent of the total floor area of the principal dwelling, the current principal dwelling, does that, does does it count the current principal dwelling? No? Okay, thank you. So with the, the intent waves the requirement? Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Um, there were, was there, nope, never mind.
I don't think there was any.
There was no correspondence.
This case, okay. Okay, our options are to approve the special use for construction of the guest garage guest house located at eighty-seven, twenty-six, Scutious Road on, on parcel, as I stated before. Based on the findings of facts is option one. Option two, motion to approve special use for the construction of garage slash guest house located at eighty-seven, twenty-six, Scutious Road. See the findings of facts contained in report oh, four, two, two, with the following conditions, or option three is to deny the land use.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the special land use for the construction of garage slash guest house located at eighty-seven, twenty-six. Based on the findings effect contained in the report oh, four, dash, twenty-two.
Support.
Okay, then we'll have a, we'll call on that.
All right. Cory?
Yeah.
Mary?
Yes.
Hi.
Lynn?
Yes.
Yes.
Matt?
Hi.
And Michelle?
Yes.
Okay. That, that is approved. Do you have a, uh, something for us to sign up on here, Lynn? I don't really have something for us to sign up on.
Oh, all your cases right there.
Okay. Okay, you don't have the, uh,
There isn't a site plan. It's just a special.
Okay, so we don't put the, oh, we don't, okay.
Yeah, you really don't have to.
Here's, uh, Andrew, so can, should Andrew take the applicant's one, yeah? There you go.
Yeah.
I ask.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you. No, it's okay, I just, I just signed it, so. And dated it, so that's and Larry witnessed me, so.
Yes. I could have co-signed it.
Oh, well, now, it doesn't require two six. Okay, case number one, which you can't, case number two, Hugh A. Brown, the third request special approval use for an accessory dwelling unit guest house property is located at eighty, seventy-eight hundred McKellen Road Parcel Number oh, oh, one, three, oh, two, three, zero, 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 oh, three, four, oh, four, three, zero, zero. A mixed residential R three zone district. And you are, you, okay. Skip, okay. Yes.
I'll make a motion to open public hearing.
Support. All in favor.
I.
Post. Okay. Public hearing is open. Anybody have any questions for Skip?
Are they gonna fix your road? Are they gonna fix your road?
Need a car wash at the end.
Yeah, I do, I waited to go get my car washed until after I drove by there yesterday. Do you have to use the restroom?
Okay, um, we need a motion to enter the, uh, report by Richard Duel and to okay, close public hearing first, okay?
I'll make that motion.
No support.
All in favor.
I.
Post. Okay, now we need.
Make a motion to add case oh, three, dash, two, two. To I don't even know, it's already on the agenda, so we just open it up.
Support. Favor.
I.
Post. Okay, property is located seventy-eight hundred McKellen Road. District standards parcel, it's a mixed residential R three zoning district, accessory dwelling unit. Guest houses are allowed in zoning district as a special approval use. Parcel applies with standards. Lot and lot area and width, building height, one-story structure complies with standards, lot coverage complies with standards. Setbacks comply with standards. Minimum floor area required is nine sixty. The proposed structure will be twenty-four by twenty-four with a floor area of five hundred and seventy-six square feet. The principal residence is fourteen hundred and fifty-six square feet of floor area. So that, are we saying the total area of the has to be more than nine sixty?
Or accessory dwelling, house is what.
So it's the total, total square foot is what we're?
The total square foot would be twenty-four by twenty-four, which is one hundred and eighty square foot.
Five seventy-six, it says here, but so the accessory building does not need to be nine hundred and sixty, okay? Okay, section six oh two, special land use approval standards. Use location, size of the nature, intensity of operation shall not be such as to disrupt the orderly property development of the district as a whole, or be in conflict with, with or discourage the principal permitted uses of the adjacent or neighboring lands and buildings. The accessory dwelling unit is consistent with the residential development in the area, no potential issues. Identify the standard has been met. Special land use shall not be more objectionable to nearby properties by reason of traffic noise vibration, dust, fumes, smoke, glare, smoke, glare, flashing lights or disposal of waste and the operation of any principal permitted use. This will not, this unit will not create any objectionable conditions, this standard is met, the you shall not increase hazardous fire or other dangers to either the property or adjacent properties. This, this, this standard has been met. The planning commission may consider the potential of impact on property values of nearby properties when determining impact of a proposed special land use on adjacent properties. No potential issues identified, this standard is met. Traffic and access, the use shall not increase traffic hazards or cause congestion on public highways and streets of the area adequate. Access to, to the use shall be furnished by either existing roads or highways or proposed roads and highways. The proposed use will not cause appreciable increase in traffic volumes or hazard accesses off of McKellen Road, no potential hazards. Identified, this standard has been met. The water supply and sewage disposal system shall be adequate for proposed use applicant will provide onsite water supply and sewer disposal according to health department. The standard has been met. The use will be adequately, the use will be adequately served by public utilities and facilities or that the person responsible for the establishment of the proposed use will adequately provide any such service or facility applicant will provide needed service and facilities beyond what is currently available. The standard is remit, the use will not create excessive additional public costs and will not be detrimental to the economic welfare of the township. No potential hazards identified, standard has been met, natural resources, proposed accessory dwelling unit will not create a substantial negative impact on the natural resources of the township or the natural environment as a whole, according to the section, the landscape shall be preserved in natural state as far as practical by minimizing tree and soil removal and grade or, or slope change shall be in keeping with the general appearance of the neighborhood. This standard has been met. General, the use would not impair the proposed intent of this ordinance, no potential issues identified, this standard has been met. Section seven thirty-seven accessory dwelling, yet units guest house accessory dwelling unit appears to meet the standards of seven thirty-seven of the ordinance confirmed.
MG.
MG. Okay, one, the accessory dwelling unit. One, accessory dwelling, the accessory dwelling does not exceed fifty percent of the total floor area of the principal unit. The accessory dwelling unit meets the required principal dwelling unit setbacks, yes. Okay, section D, accessory, accessory dwelling unit will be provided electrical, electricity, plumbing and heating. I assume that. Okay, that's that, all right. The accessory unit will be self-contained freestanding detached unit, the standard has been met, accessory unit has a separate exterior entrance, the standard is remit, because section D is section G, the residents of the primary unit shall maintain accessory unit and show sure that no excessive noise, traffic or light occurs on the property. And for some reason, this, he doesn't have that, this standard has been met, so.
Yeah, that's the one we're on.
We're on G. I guess why, why would he? Why wouldn't that, would that have been that? Or did he just, he missed it? G.
G. I know I wouldn't be.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, H, the accessory unit will conform to current building code standards, the standard has been met. One additional parking spot will be provided onsite for accessory dwelling. Standard has been met. Okay, summary of findings. Okay, option one is to approve the approve the special permit as for the accessory dwelling located at seventy-eight hundred McKellen Road. Option two, to approve the special land use for the construction of accessory dwelling located at seventy-eight hundred McKellen Road. Option two, to approve the special end use for the construction of accessory dwelling located at seventy eight hundred McKellen Road, Alpina, Michigan on parcel. Oh, oh, one, three, oh, two, three, zero, 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 oh, four, three, zero, zero, based on findings of fact contained in the report. Oh, three, two, two, with the following conditions and. Option three is to deny the. Special use.
I'll make a motion to approve the special land use for the construction of an accessory dwelling unit located at seventy eight hundred McKellen Road in Alpina. Um, based on the findings effect contained in report zero three dash two two, support.
Just, okay, the, uh, one question. It's the, uh, like, public utilities and that, that, the sewer and, uh, sewer has to all go through the health department and that will be, okay, so. We're good with that, that, alright, okay. Yeah. Yeah, okay. Should have mentioned, okay, we're. Yes.
So, um, Corey?
Yeah.
Yes.
Hi.
Lynn, yes.
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, it is.
Thank you to, um, Mr. Bergen, Mrs. Spiegelmeier for their letters.
I'm sorry, yes, I should have mentioned, yeah.
Yeah. Bless her cute heart. Well, we appreciate their letters of support, so thank them for it, yeah.
Okay, here you go, uh. Thank you.
Thank you.
See, Mr. Brown.
Okay, anything else for the good of the, uh?
We have about election of officers.
We do.
We do, that's all we do.
Well, only Michelle, I think, was appointed because of, um, Amber resigning, and that's why that happened, so, and then they.
I was, I'm chair and waiting or something like that. Vice chair, is that what it is? Okay.
See, I, I didn't have to sit at vice chair for years, I just moved in.
I was gonna say, what other officers do we have, Norman, can you provide any?
We had a secretary, but I, and Lynn is, uh, are you, are you our secretary, or are you the? I don't know. Yeah. I guess if you weren't able to attend a meeting, we would appoint a. Yeah, at that time, yeah.
Did they can leave?
I just.
Oh, we did?
Oh, okay.
I nominate Tom. Chair.
I support.
Then Michelle first.
Sure. Michelle supported.
Is it a roll call? Roll call, yeah, um, Corey?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
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 I make a motion to write Michelle for vice chair.
Again. Roll call again, um, Corey?
Yes.
There.
Yes.
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 That?
Yes.
Yeah.
You were near last time, it was a lot easier.
Yeah, I know, you don't know what I was doing on camera.
Well, that's what happens when.
You weren't on.
Better stay healthy and engaged, that's all I gotta say.
Okay, that. Anything else? Well, that was quick.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Oppose, okay, adjourn.